Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April 25th, 2018 zoning board meeting for the town of Merrimack. The next ZBA meeting will be May 30th, 2018. This evening, a couple of our full-timers are out, so all three, Kathleen, Lenny, and Rod, will all be sitting in tonight for Tony, Fran, and Rich. If you'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you plan on speaking tonight for or against a petition, or speaking regarding putting a petition for it, I need you to please stand and raise your right hand if you're going to do any speaking tonight at all. Okay. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. All right, excellent. Now, with that, let me just read the preamble, and we'll get underway. So, good evening. We will proceed with the petitions in the order they are listed on the agenda unless the Board deems it appropriate to take a petition out of order. State and local ordinances set out the criteria that must be met in order for the Board to grant a request. The minimum requirements are outlined in the form provided by the Community Development Office, and the petitioner should proceed with this format to provide adequate justification for the Board and grant the request. The Chair will open the meeting to hear testimony either for or against a request. All discussions will be between the Speaker and the Board. Please be respectful of all in the interest of time, refrain from repeating previous testimony. No new documentation will be accepted by the Board for consideration this evening, but the Board reserves the right to ask for additional testimony at any time. After hearing the facts from all parties regarding a petition, the Chairman will close the public hearing, and the Board will deliberate and vote on the requests before moving on to the next petition. Please turn off all cell phones and/or pagers if you have them. Point of order, when you come down this evening, please make sure that you sign in on the clipboard, state your name for the record, and also make sure that the bright green light on the microphone in front of you, although there's a little green button there, make sure the bright green light is on, so that way we can get everything down for recording. First petition this evening is Mark DePont, petitioner in ZJBV Properties LLC, owner, variance under Section 2.02.4B of the zoning ordinance to permit retail sales in an industrial district. The parcel is located at 105 Daniel Webster Highway and I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 2D, lot 021-01, case number 2018-08. So, you want to make sure the mic is on? And if you're going to be standing, there is a portable mic to use as well.
We shouldn't remain standing for long, it'll freak you out.
Okay.
I think you all have a copy of this. I may refer to it from time to time. I'm going to need it a lot. My name's Mark Kanakis. With me also was Nicholas Kanakis. We're both from Merrimack and Kanakis of Nashua. And I represent both the applicant, Mark DePont, and ZJBV Properties LLC, who is the owner of 105 Daniel Webster Highway, relative to tonight's request. And we're specifically requesting that the applicant be granted a use variance to allow for retail sales in the I-1 industrial zone. As I'm sure you all know, the property that we're talking about is the old DCU Federal Credit Union building on Daniel Webster Highway. The site's been vacant since 2012. The current applicant seeks to allow a retail sales component for business that assembles and sells swing sets, birdhouses, and sheds, along with another permitted use on the property as an office space and a contractor's yard. As you all know, there are five requirements that the applicant needs to meet for the Board to grant the variance request. We'll address each of those items now, and then obviously welcome questions from the Board.
Actually, after you -- and that'd be great. After you address each item, if you could just pause, because we may have discussion items for that particular item.
That would be great. Yeah, great way to do it. Thank you. First, the granting of the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. This variance is to allow retail sales in the industrial district, the I-1 district. The proposed use will not threaten the health, safety, convenience, or general welfare of anyone in the town of Merrimack in any way. The proposed use is for a retail store, but in connection with manufacturing, contractor's yard, and office space. This is low impact. It'll generate minimal traffic, minimal noise, and no other detrimental effects to the surrounding area. In order to be contrary to the public interest, variance has got to be in a marked degree of conflict with the ordinance, so much so that it really violates the proposed use for the basic zoning objectives. Our proposed use for retail sales in no way rises to this level. In fact, it's going to be in the public interest by providing a purposeful and safe use for the property, which for years has obviously been vacant. And based on all these factors, we believe that the requested variance does not conflict with the purpose of the ordinance, and is not contrary to the public interest, and is consistent with other uses in the immediate area.
Any questions from the Board? Continue.
Second, the proposed use will observe the spirit of the ordinance. The spirit of the ordinance is really to ensure a reasonable and compatible use of the property while ensuring the town's health, safety, convenience, and general welfare. The proposed use of the property is low impact. It will not result in any negative effects on the surrounding properties or in the area as a whole. This use will be really a minor change from the property's prior use, and will generate minimal traffic, noise, and other detrimental effects in the surrounding area. The use contemplated is a mixed use, and it's going to be a mixed use of manufacturing, which is allowed in the zone, a contractor's yard, which is allowed in the zone, an office space, which is allowed as a support use in the zone, and the requested retail sales, thereby minimizing the impact of any retail sales component for the business which the variance is being sought. Therefore, the spirit of the ordinance, seeking to promote the health, safety, convenience, and welfare of Merrimack, is observed by the variance request.
Questions? Number three?
Number three, substantial justice will be done by granting the variance, because the benefits of the applicant are not outweighed by the harm to the general public. Here, the granting of the variance would not result in any appreciable harm to the public. The request for the property to be used only in part for retail sales, for new sheds, birdhouses, wooden swing set, playhouses, and the sale of mulch and crushed stone in connection with those uses. Obviously, when you build these things, you need to have crushed stone around it or mulch, and so we'd have those items there for the customers to use. This use is significantly more benign and of lower impact than many of the uses allowed in the I-1 district, and not out of character with the neighborhood at all. Thus, the benefits to the applicant are significantly outweighed by any harm to the general public.
So, I have a question. So, you're talking about actually building the swing sets on-site, or you go to the customer site and build the swing sets on the customer site?
We will be assembling in people's yards, but manufacturing, cutting the kits to sizes, and then bringing the kits to the customers' homes to install.
So, will there be an increase in the amount of truck traffic delivering lumber? And I've built one of those swing sets, so I know what goes into them, so I mean, are we talking an increase in the amount as far as lumber and deliveries?
We will be receiving lumber deliveries, but very minimal, limited. You know, it's not going to be a daily occurrence of 18-wheelers coming in with lumber.
I've also seen some yards in which they have, like, there's one, I can't remember the company, it's out on Amherst Street, and you could see it right from the road. Their yard has kind of bricked-off areas where they have mulch, or different types of mulch and stone. Is that going to be a similar type of contractor yard you're going to have?
Yeah, we'll have different bins for different materials.
That'll be outdoors?
Yeah, it'll be outdoors.
Okay, all right. And then, so you're not raising the building, or are there plans to raise the building or use the existing structure?
A zigzag structure for offices, and then possibly constructing an industrial manufacturing building.
So, what size, what type of industrial manufacturing building are we talking about?
It would be a free-span, open, clear-open. The size has not been yet, you know, hasn't been determined yet.
Like a Butler Building style, just an open frame.
Okay, all right.
Clear span.
And again, this would have to be reviewed and approved by the planning board when we're going to erect new structures on the property.
Okay.
Mark, if you don't get that building approved, do you still plan on going ahead doing this? Or is that building necessary to what you're doing?
It would make things a lot easier, but not necessary.
Okay. All right, number four.
One other thing I just wanted to point out, that the delivery of the lumber and the assembly there, that would be an allowed use on the property regardless, to assemble the delivery there. So, it doesn't really affect the component of the retail sales, which isn't dragging the lumber in there.
Right. Well, I guess my question is, some of these sets get pretty big, and I mean, you almost literally need a flatbed 18-wheeler to pull them around. So, I didn't know if you were building them there and then transporting to a client site, or if you're just going to go to the client site.
No, everything would just be manufactured, cut to size, and then loaded on a trailer, and then erected in the customer's yard.
You're not doing any wood treatment there, are you?
No treatment at all.
Okay.
All right, number four.
Yeah, so the, excuse me, the proposed use will not diminish the value of the surrounding properties. Since all the surrounding properties, which include the Thomas More College, BAE Systems, several restaurants, a retail landscaping, a retail auto sales, a retail granite and marble sales, all in that immediate area, these uses are similar to what's going in there now, and so it's not going to be out of character with the neighborhood. This request merely seeks to allow the property to continue to be used in a similar manner to the surrounding uses. Thus, the value of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. And in fact, the establishment of this use proposed by the applicant will have a positive impact on the property values, as opposed to having a vacant site on the property which has existed for the last six years.
Questions on number four? Number five?
Finally, it's always my favorite, the hardship. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship due to the special conditions of the property. We believe it's an unnecessary hardship based upon both of the tests for hardship under the statutes and common law. First, there's no fair substantial relationship that exists between the general public purpose of the zoning ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to this property, because the intent of the industrial district's permitted uses is to ensure compatible and consistent uses that also protect the Merrimack's health, safety, and convenience, and general welfare. This property has had a non-industrial use as a bank of credit reusing for the last 45 years. This non-industrial use has become a part of the general character of the neighborhood, and the general character of the neighborhood has also developed into many other retail establishments right nearby. Those similar uses on the surrounding properties show that there's no fair substantial relationship between the purpose of the Section 2.02.4B of the ordinance and the application to the property. Second, the proposed use is, and the second part of that test is that the proposed use is reasonable as it is benign and of low impact. The proposed use will not diminish the character of the neighborhood, as that was well-established along by the DCU building and the existence of similar retail uses on the nearby properties. So, that's the first test. I'll leave it, and then I'll go to the second test.
Well, is everybody satisfied with the first part? Any questions? You don't need to read the second part. The first part, if you meet this first part, you don't need to do the second, so.
I just say for the record, I think we have it on the second part as well. I won't go into it, though. For all those reasons, Mr. Chairman and Board members, we believe the Board must grant the proposed use variance. And going along with the memorandum that was submitted by the Town Planner, the ZBA Administrator, we certainly are not opposed to having the planning board review whatever site plan requirements they want to have before we open up shot.
That would, actually, if this variance is granted, you would need to obtain site plan approval from the Board.
That's perfectly acceptable.
So, questions from the Board? Kathleen? Rod? Lenny? Is there anybody, I'm going to open up the public hearing, is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against this petition? Close the public hearing, yep. Are there any final questions for the gentleman before I close the public hearing? All right, I'll close the public hearing. And discussion in the Board, motions, comments?
I like the justification on this that Mark has provided. It makes sense. The fact that it's been non-retail for 45 years, I don't think has any bearing on this. We judge each one as far as it is now. But for that property, this is, I think, a reasonable use for it. It fits in with a lot of the other properties that are in the area. Whether you consider the manufacturer industrial space, I don't know, not my bailiwick, but I think it makes sense. So, I would make a motion that we approve their application for a variance under Section 2.02.4B of the zoning ordinance to permit retail sales in an industrial district. The parcel is located at 105 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 2D, lot 021-1, case number 2018-08.
With the staff recommendations?
Yes, with the staff recommendations. That's a given.
And a second from Kathleen. Any other discussion items before we vote? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That would be 5-0-0. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Good luck.
Good luck. Wish you were here 15 years ago, when I built mine, but hey.
Not for this.
Not for this. Congratulations, gentlemen. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, second petition this evening is Neighbor Works of Southern New Hampshire, petitioner and the Granite YMCA owner, variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a multifamily residence with an approximate residential density of 5.5 units per acre, whereas one per 40,000 square feet is permitted. The parcel is located at 315 Daniel Webster Highway in the R-4 Residential and Aquifer Conservation Districts, and portions of the 100 and 500-year flood zones. Tax map 4D-4, lot 043-01, case number 2018-09. Welcome, gentlemen.
Oh, I'm signing in, but I think you could definitely turn on the same images that you have.
Is your mic on? Is the mic on?
It gets me every time.
Yeah, all right. So, you want the projector?
I'd like to project the same images.
Justin? He's coming.
Okay, thank you.
Take care.
I should be all set to plug that in here.
Thank you. Would we be able to see it on that one, too?
Chris.
Chris, I'm sorry, Chris.
Justin, there's a joke we had there.
It's Chris.
Yeah.
Apologize. Thank you, Chris.
I mislegited.
Sorry, it was Lynn's fault.
Perfect, thank you.
I can see that, right over your shoulder.
Set. Whenever you're ready. Good evening, Chairman, members of the zoning board. My name is Kevin Anderson with Meridian Land Services. I'm here with Robert Torni of Neighbor Works, and I'm here with attorney Susan Manchester. Each of us are going to speak this evening. Tonight's ZBA application is for a variance request to increase density. The subject parcel is identified as map 4D-4, lot 43-1, and is 8.2 acres in size. It's currently owned by the YMCA. This is one of three abutting parcels that the YMCA is purchasing. It's Neighbor Works' intent to only purchase lot 43-1, and therefore, this variance is just for that lot. The lot is zoned residential R-4. Multifamily is allowed use in this zone at a density of one unit per 40,000 square feet, or .91 acres. This parcel falls within an elderly housing overlay district defined as 55 years of age and older, which gives a density bonus of eight units per acre. Given the parcel's size, the allowable eight-unit density, there could be up to 65 units on this parcel. As many of you are aware, there is a previously approved plan for this site. The developer at that time was successful in getting the approval of a 57-unit elderly housing development, or 6.9 units per acre. What we are proposing is nine five-unit multifamily buildings for a total of 45 units, or a density of 5.5 units per acre. All units are located outside of the flood zone. All units meet the R-4 zoning district criteria, and are outside of the front, rear, and side yard setbacks. It's at this point in our design, we don't anticipate any waivers from the planning As you can see with the first image I had shown, these are actual constructed Neighbor Works projects, and when you look at our concept, you can see we're trying to emulate that style. They're successful projects, and the layout kind of leads to that. To close my portion of this presentation, zoning allows for a density of eight units per acre. There's an approved plan for 6.9 units per acre, and we are requesting 5.5 units per acre. At this time, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Robert. He's going to speak a little bit about the Neighbor Works organization.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Robert Torni, and I serve as the Executive Director of Neighbor Works, Southern New Hampshire. We're a private, nonprofit, community development corporation with a focus on providing affordable housing, and have been doing this work for over 25 years now. And although we are a nonprofit developer, we use a combination of public and private financing sources to develop real estate, and so the actual ownership entity of this proposed development will be a limited partnership that will pay taxes, real estate taxes, to the town of Merrimack. In addition to developing affordable housing, we also provide education and counseling for those that are seeking to own a home, and we've helped literally thousands of families and individuals over the years with their housing situation. So, our neighborhood development programs include neighborhood revitalization in more urban communities like Manchester and Nashua, and the creation of new affordable rental housing in more suburban communities like Merrimack. But regardless of the town or city that we work in, we have a very robust tenant services and community engagement offering that includes things like building community gardens, providing back-to-school programs, tenant barbecues, field trips, clubs, and activities for youth. We currently have 418 apartments in our portfolio in 10 developments throughout the region, and we pay a little over $600,000 a year in annual real estate taxes. Our work really began in Manchester Center City more than 25 years ago with a focus on neighborhood revitalization and creating homeownership opportunities. And although our mission has stayed the same, our work has grown over the years to include addressing affordable housing needs throughout the region and throughout several communities. So far, we've developed and owned properties in Goffstown, Hooksett, Amherst, and Londonderry, which you have photos of on the screen. In fact, we're scheduled to complete the second and final phase of our Londonderry development this summer, and those 33 units have a waiting list of over 100 people that will bring our total number of units to over 450. Our target market is households who are earning at or below 60% of the area median income. In the town of Merrimack, that's $44,000 for an individual, and up to just over $62,000 for a family. That translates into rents that range from just around $1,200 a month for a two-bedroom to around $1,400 a month for a three-bedroom townhouse, including heat. We've been seeking to find a site in Merrimack suitable for this type of development for a few years now. A couple of years ago, we actually met with the owners of the old hotel site at Exit 11 that has recently been approved for apartments, and to look at the feasibility of that site for our work. And that project was just simply too much for our scale or our capacity. So, when the YMCA approached us last year with this site, it was quite appealing to us. The 57 units that it's currently approved for is about the right size for us, but we do not develop age-restricted housing. In fact, the circumstances around this site are very similar to the project that we have underway in Londonderry. There, we bought a site that was approved for 66 age-restricted units, and we went back to the town seeking approvals to build 78 units like the ones we're proposing here. Now, our first concept in Merrimack for this site was to see if we could build 65 units rather than the 57 that are originally approved, but after meeting with the planning board this winter and nearby residents, it was clear that building fewer units was more important and more desirable than building more units. So, we've developed a concept that now includes 45 units, a feasible number for our work, and fewer than are currently approved. And although we don't develop age-restricted housing, I'll add that over 25% of the units in our portfolio are headed by households who happen to be 55 and over. So, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions, or I can turn it back to Kevin to discuss the need for the variance tonight.
Sorry, are there any questions from the Board? What was the property address in Manchester?
I'm sorry?
You said it started in Manchester. What's the property address?
The center city of Manchester, we called it the Tree Streets, Cedar Street, Spruce Street, Auburn Pine. Matter of fact, this, I know we can't submit new material, but in our annual report, we are just completing the renovation of 98 apartments. They were the properties that we developed 23 to 25 years ago, recapitalizing them and revitalizing them. But our organization has grown from being just a neighborhood-based organization to becoming citywide, and then several years ago, we became Greater Manchester, and then about five years ago, Southern New Hampshire, to include the Nashua market as well.
Okay. Any questions? All right. If you want to go through the five criteria. Hi, just sign in beforehand, please?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
My name is Sue Manchester. I'm an attorney at She &amp; Finney, so they've given me the criteria to go through.
Okay.
The granting of the variance will not be contrary to the public interest, because one of the stated purposes of the Merrimack zoning ordinance is to make it, Merrimack, an attractive place to live. This project will create an attractive, affordable rental housing community. The project will bring tax revenue to the town. The project, they neglected to say that one of the other changes they made to the project from its original design over the winter is, after listening to the residents, it was redesigned to avoid wetlands, and it has been designed to avoid direct access to Island Drive, which was very important to some of the, obviously, the residents on Island Drive. The spirit of the ord-
Hold on a second. Is there any questions on one? Lenny?
Yeah, I have a quick question. I see the main area of the driveway in Dock, that would assume to be the paving. I also see the back road that does connect to Island Drive. Is that just an emergency access, or is this a wrong plan?
That is, only the dark shading area is pavement and driveway. This does not connect to Island Pond Drive. What you're looking at is an existing sewer easement that connects to Island Pond Drive. What you're looking at is an existing sewer easement that connects to Island Pond Drive.
Thank you. Any other questions? Number two.
We believe the spirit of the ordinance is observed because the proposed project, again, the spirit is tied to the public interest test, will be an attractive place to live. The property has already been approved for more intense use, namely fifty-seven units. I think it's, it's important to remember that zoning does allow eight units per acre if they're age-restricted. The proposal is consistent with the surrounding area and will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten the health, safety, or public welfare. Now, I fully recognize that this property has been undeveloped for many, many, many years. So I cannot tell you that, of course, changing it from woods to a project, it is a change. However, when you look at the variance aspect, a elderly housing project, which is more dense, would be permitted, and the applicant would not have to come before the board for that use.
Right. So, but the elderly housing project never came to fruition, even though that a variance was provided to it, it never came to fruition as far as being built. So when you're saying the, the, what was it? I lost my thought here. This, you know, the essential character of the neighborhood will not be altered. It actually will be greatly altered and to include an incredible amount of more traffic on an already densely traveled road in Merrimack, and that's got, and I might add, a road that can't be widened.
I'm not going to try to suggest that DW Highway is not without its challenges. But I do believe that the elderly project that was approved does not, did not need a variance. So a project that has eight units per acre could be built here, and there would be no requirement to determine whether it was going to alter the essential neighborhood. So if you compare this project, which is less dense, to what could be here, then there really is no rational reason for the difference. The only difference is they're family units and not elderly units. We do recognize that traffic is an issue, and we expect to have to address that very vigorously at the planning board hearing.
Because they're not putting any more lights on that road.
We heard that.
Yeah.
We did hear that. Yes, we did. The neighbors have told us that.
Yeah.
No, we do recognize that that is, that's a hurdle that we need to get over.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns on the board? All right.
The other thing I do want to, I'm sorry.
Play on means, please.
Admittedly, the change from wooded to developed is a change. But the neighborhood, this is a permitted use in the neighborhood, perhaps not as dense, unless you're elderly. And it's not as though, when I say alter the character of the neighborhood, it's not as though we're putting an industrial building or a manufacturing facility in the middle of a residential area. This is a residential use. So.
Okay. Unless there's any questions? Rod?
I have a question. This was approved. This was approved several years ago for, I think it was a retirement or a senior area. Was there a variance?
No.
Needed back then? What is the difference that a variance is needed now and not then?
This area is already designated as in the elderly overlay district. So there's a center, there's a section of town, kind of in the, in the center, that says, if you're building elderly units, you can have this density. If you're not building elderly units, then you have a much, much smaller density. So what they're saying now is, they're not talking about building elderly, and so therefore I'm not going to compare their petition with what could be, or what has been proposed. I'm comparing it to what they're asking for versus what we're allowed to do. So since they're not doing elderly, what they're saying is, we want to build more units than what is allowed for non-elderly housing.
Thank you. Number three.
Substantial justice is done. Denying the variance would not result in gain to the general public. Actually, the public would gain because good, quality, affordable rental housing and services would be provided. Granting the variance is, however, required for the applicant to develop this project. The, as the applicant mentioned, this is affordable housing, and as such, there is, the numbers wouldn't work if it was to comply with the zoning requirements.
So, real quickly, again, substantial justice, I've got, you quoted rates of twelve hundred for a family, or twelve hundred for a single and fourteen hundred for a family. I, in doing research prior to the, to the meeting, I know that London Court, it's thirteen hundred a month for an apartment right up there. So, and then we obviously have a whole bunch of apartments that have been tentatively approved that are going to be on the other side of the highway. I don't know, remember, it was four hundred some odd units or something to that extent? It just doesn't seem like, when you say affordable, and I understand what you're trying to accomplish here, is bringing, being able to help people out and give them a step up, but from a, it seems like, you know, from a substantial justice, it seems like the rents are a little high compared to what the local market is already charging for people who doesn't, doesn't matter what their income level is. So I guess I'm a little confused on, you know, as far as the gain of affordable rental housing, if it's kind of on the same level as everything else.
Yeah, I'll let Robert address that.
So our, the rents that I mentioned are, they're actually targeted at an income level, to be affordable to an income level of below sixty percent of area median income. The twelve hundred dollar a month rent that I mentioned, just under twelve hundred dollars, about eleven eighty, is for a two-bedroom townhouse with heat included. So I have looked at the market here as well, and there's really nothing in that price range that includes that level of, you know, comprehensive housing costs. For a three-bedroom townhouse, it would be right around the fourteen, just under fourteen hundred dollars a month. Again, for a three-bedroom townhome, like in the pictures that you saw earlier, that includes the heating costs as well. And so we tend to be a few hundred dollars, actually, below any kind of comparable market rent, if you can find a comparable unit to the townhouse style that we developed.
Okay. All right.
What are you talking about for a mix between the two and the three-bedroom?
Roughly eighteen threes and twenty-seven? Two bedrooms. Does that add up to forty-five?
Close enough.
Yeah. So we typically build more twos than threes.
Any other questions? Number four.
The values of surrounding properties would not be diminished because the proposed project will be attractive and well-maintained. As you heard earlier, Neighbor Works takes pride in its projects, and they continue to own them, and when they need rehab, they do that. They are extremely well-maintained and attractive. The location and clustering of the buildings was done after listening to the neighbors at the conceptual planning board hearing. So we have tried to take into account what the neighbors have said they would like. I'm not suggesting they're all totally happy, but we have been listening to them. The proposed use is less dense than an elderly project that could be approved. The proposed use is residential, in a residential zone. And we do not, at the applicant's suggestion, again, we don't propose any driveway connection to Island Drive, and that was important to them because they didn't want that, that connection to be just kind of a thoroughfare to go through.
Number five.
Literal hardship one. Quality affordable housing will result, will improve the general health and welfare of the city. We believe the proposed use is a reasonable one because multifamily is a permitted use. I'm going to say again, I'm sorry to keep repeating it. If there were elder, if the, if the housing was for elderly people, it could be this This is less than, if it were elderly, what it could be. Because the rental rates are targeted towards, we mentioned that the housing, there is some density required to make these projects affordable. You know, this property has, it has its challenges. It's, you know, it's, it's right, it has some wetlands, so we've had to kind of dense it up together. So, given the, given the fact that eight units, eight units per acre could be developed for elderly, we don't believe it's reasonable, in this case, to prohibit five units of family.
Questions?
I still don't understand the hardship.
Well, under the, it's, we believe it's a reasonable use. The site is, is constrained in the sense that it is, it's, it's, it's got wetlands, oops, I'm sorry, did I do something?
No.
It's got wetlands, and it's got, it's an, well, it's, it's kind of an odd shape. But for me, the test, other than the reasonable use one, is, is there, what is the purpose? When you look at the fact that eight units of elderly.
I'm not going through the eight units of elderly. I want to know what specifically is, on your project that you're proposing, if we don't grant this, what is the hardship to you?
We can't build it.
Why?
We can only build eight units, and that would not be, that, the numbers won't work.
All right, so that's the hardship.
Yes.
Has nothing to do with the elderly and the, everything else that you're counting?
No, that, yes.
I want to know the hardship to this project.
The hardship is that it can't be built.
Okay. Thank you.
Because you've referenced the elderly, and I'm not going to hurt people, you have referenced the elderly, but we're not talking about an elderly project. We have, everyone fully understands the elderly overlay, but that, we're talking about a project that's not that, so.
But that is the hardship.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions from the board? Concerns, thoughts? I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like to speak for this project? Is there anybody who'd like to speak against this project?
If you would, give up your seat, please.
Oh, absolutely.
You can come down, actually, you can disconnect your computer as well if you'd like. You could just come down and sign in, please.
Thanks.
If you could state your name for the record, you were sworn in, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Christine Hugh. I live at three thirty-three Daniel Webster Highway, which will be a, in a butter here to the very end of the project where the cul-de-sac is, just for reference. Just a couple of things. I am concerned with this project in relation to the property values. Mine and the other two next to me, those are really the only, well, the only three, and then the one on, technically on Daniel Webster Drive next to me. A little concerned about that. We are, if this project does go through, we're going to be sandwiched in between a very busy highway and then an overzoned development behind us. So as far as the, you know, our values of our, of our lots, I do see that they could be diminished because of that level of activity between those two.
So a quick question. I think I may have seen you in here before they had the house, they built the house that's in front of you.
Yes.
So, okay, I just was trying to gauge where your house was on the map.
Yeah.
Okay, so your backyard is that, is basically going to be?
Close to that cul-de-sac.
Close, close to that cul-de-sac.
Yeah, so mine is really the, the first one that shows. It's, I don't know if it has a number here, but it's an odd-shaped lot with the long driveway and then the, the main part of the lot pushed in the back there.
Okay.
Four D four hyphen forty-six.
Yep.
Thank you. That sounds familiar.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, my house, the multifamily next to me, and then there's a single family next to that. Three residential areas that would definitely be impacted by this, you know, not technical term, but being sandwiched in between these two, an overzoned lot and a busy highway. So I just imagine that has some impact on our values. There was another thing that I wanted to bring up. Obviously, traffic is definitely an effect that we would see. It's already congested area. I know that doesn't necessarily have a zoning issue, but planning, I'm sure, will, would need to address that.
Actually, traffic can, is probably more planning, but it's, the zoning can also look at traffic as well.
Okay, good, thank you for that. Think that those are the only two major concerns that I wanted to, to bring up at this time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak against this petition?
I'd like, I didn't promise to tell the whole truth.
Raise your hand. You'd say, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please have a seat and sign in, sir.
Who took the pen?
Okay, I'm not here to speak against it. I just wanted to actually make a comment about it. I think this is a-
Can you identify yourself?
Can you identify yourself where you, where you live, your name?
I'm Wayne Johnson. I live on Island Drive, seventy-nine Island Drive. And we've been concerned all along for over the years of a project like this going in. And this is the best project I've seen proposed. I'm really pleased by it compared to, to what we've seen in the past. My biggest concern, though, is that section that stops the connection to Island Drive. I think that's one of the best features of this new plan, in addition to having moved away from the shore farther. But I'm concerned, is that connection possibly going to come back, to connect it to Island Drive? Or is this kind, does the zoning board say, no, you're not going to do that?
The planning board will set the final site plan, and if that's their site plan, then that's their site plan. Now, if they were to come back a couple of years from now and want to put in an access road, I would imagine, I believe, based on what I'm looking at, and I could be wrong, they would have to seek some variances, because I think they're going over some wetlands and stuff. So they'd have to come back to zoning, and then they probably also have to come back to planning as well.
Okay, so most likely, we can assume that if this gets approved, there's not going to be a, you know, anything beyond that cul-de-sac, then.
You know what assuming does.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
The planners, it shows.
Yeah.
Does not show an access. If they went to planning board and they said, but we determined that we need this because fire wants it, that could change something. But, but for the moment, we're just talking about whether we can put this number of units on this property. Trust me, planning board is going to be dealing with all the other issues.
Yeah. Okay, well, just put me on the record, is, I like what they've done.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this petition? Come on down. Raise your hand. Say, tell the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Neither.
Thank you. We're good.
We're good.
Yes. My name is George Baird. I live at 82 Island Drive.
Okay.
Are you saying that there could possibly be a connection to the Island Drive? If an emergency would have to be the fire department could have?
So what, we're, we're, the, the plan as it stands right now and what we're looking to approve as far as the current plan does not, does not have a connection to Island Drive. However, if down the road, for whatever reason, it's a couple of years from now, whatever, if it is, if it's approved, they could come back and seek to put in a road in which then they would have to get a variance because I believe that's going to go over some wetlands and they would have to go through planning again.
So it's planning and then variance?
It would be no variance, opposite variance than planning. If they were going to do that down the road.
So right now, it's, it's not connected. But if the fire department said it would have to require one, it would go to, back to you and then to the board?
It'd have to come back to us because it's going to go through wetlands and then it would have to go through planning again as well and.
It may even have to hit conservation, right?
Chances of it happening are pretty slim, but.
Because I mean, that is the island's biggest. At one time, there were 200 cars into that little road that just in the, the steep embankment of it is just, was horrendous.
Which is why I think it would be highly unlikely.
If that's a roundabout at the end and they have to turn around and go back where they entered?
Yes.
What? Has anyone ever been on DW Highway at 5:30?
Yes.
Anybody that's set lights, would it take six change of lights to go through the intersections up near the Berging King? It's unfortunate that Daniel Webster can't be widened anyway and it just for the fact when the cul-de-sac were put in there, just recently they put a cul-de-sac underneath the King Kong and back there they just, that was a nightmare. It was a nightmare for us. But I also wanted to know that the, maybe the, it isn't variance the questions I really need anything, because I talked about previous and previous pavement, the, the being so close to the water, you still have to be, they still have to be a part of the Shoreline Protection Act. They have to go through all that all, all over again? You just can't say what was proved before, you can prove it now?
No.
They have to do the tests of the.
Pretty sure they'd have to go through, they have to go through the entire process again.
So we're starting from zero?
If they were going to put the, are you talking about the road?
No, no, oh, I'm sorry. It looks like there's parking lots that are close to the water. Oh, those buildings?
No, those are buildings, those are buildings.
Oh, the buildings, well, even still, it's very close to the, to the bank.
This is, this is a new plan. That if we agree to allow them this density, which is all we're talking about.
Density right now.
In, in this particular parcel, this plan has to go to the planning board and go through everything.
And then they're going to.
Has nothing to do with the other one.
Okay.
We're just, we're looking merely at the density of, of buildings that they want to put into an area.
Just.
And that's it.
Yep.
Okay, great, great.
So if, so if it does go, if, if, if the variance is approved, then you would receive a notice for planning and you would attend the planning meeting.
And will be notified?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay.
Just, just like you were for this, you'd be notified for the planning as well?
I don't know if you know the history of it, but it's over 12 years. We've been trying to get Mullen to get it through, but, well, thank you very much.
No, not a problem, thank you.
Good.
Do you have, is there anybody else that'd like to speak for or against? Okay. If you want to come back and address any of the issues, concerns, you're more than welcome to. Make any final statements?
Just for clarification purposes, you are correct. We need to go back for planning, shoreline and alteration of terrain. It's all re-permitted again.
So, and, and I actually, a point was brought up and I actually kind of thought about it and I probably should have brought it up during, I think it was substantial justice or, or one of the, one of the variances, I have to go back and take a look. But I think it was maybe spirit of the ordinance, but I, there, there is no, I mean, if there, there's no fire way. I mean, the fire trucks come in and there's something at the front end. Just the people that are further in are trapped. They can't get out. And, and I'm looking at, I, I actually drove to the Londonderry place. Nice place, but my, I guess my question is, I mean, you get three or four fire trucks in there? Whoever's on the inside, they're not getting out. And there's no, and there's no egress out, is, is that?
Planning issue.
Yeah. I mean, I guess it's a planning issue, but I don't know. That seems like, it seems like a safety concern if you ask me. Just not being able to get, not being able to get out of there. But that's, you know, hopefully that doesn't, isn't an issue, so. Is there any other comments or questions or?
I just had a question regarding concern with the neighbor by the cul-de-sac.
A question regarding, I was thinking with the neighbor by the cul-de-sac. What will be, or will there be anything separating your association or your group from the neighbors? Will there be a fence or trees or brush or?
So if you can follow my cursor, this is Christine's lot right here. We fully intend to address all of those items at planning. Planning, I'm sure will weigh in on effects to, buffers and effects to abutters.
Okay, thank you. I know it didn't affect the decision, I was curious.
Any other questions? Lenny? All right, no, if there are no other questions, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to close the public hearing. Discussions of the board.
I'll jump in. The only issue that we're, have before us is the density. And without the density, the project can't fly. So it's kind of a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned. End of discussion.
Lenny?
I'm very familiar with NeighborWorks. I, I've done a lot of this and, and I'm in the banking industry and so I'm very familiar with it. It's something that we have talked about in town with affordable housing and I'm sorry for those people who say we don't want those people living here. That's not what affordable housing is. So I'm pleased to see you going from this elderly density to something that is lighter and is a need in this town. That we do not have enough rental units in this town. We have people that are moving out because they can't find rentals in the town. So I applaud you for coming up with a more reasonable solution to this property. The fact that you listened to the abutters, I think is a benefit. That you've moved away from the wetlands area, that you shut off the access to Island Drive, all are pluses in, in, in my mind. I will alert you that you're going to have your hands full with the planning board because that one access at that point on DW Highway is a huge challenge. I'll also tell you, you probably have a challenge on parking because that's becoming an issue on a lot of these, not even rental units, but a lot of the condo projects, is parking is going to be an issue. But those aren't our decisions. I'm just saying that I, I think this is a reasonable alternative. The fact that you, if you can't get this density, you can't build on it and that leaves it open for having an elderly project in there that somebody eventually will build on, that I'm happy to not have them do. So I, I think this, I'm with Lenny on this.
Rod? Kathleen?
We're only concerned about density right now.
Mike's not on.
She was just muttering.
All right, all right. I, I, I see it kind of missing. Spirit, substantial justice, hardship. In personal opinion, I, and I see, you know, obviously, the density is, is an issue. I understand that an elderly complex could come in and easily just drop an elderly complex in there with six, seven units. I gotta be honest with you, I, I think you're overcrowding that area. But I'll, I'll leave it up to, I'll leave it up to the vote of the board, so. If I can have a motion, or unless there's any other discussion items.
I will move that we approve the petition of NeighborWorks and grant it YMCA for variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of multifamily residential residences with an approximate residential density of 5.5 units per acre, whereas one unit per 40,000 square feet is permitted. The parcel is located at 315 Daniel Webster Highway in the R4 residential and Aquifer Conservation Districts and portions in the 100 and 500-year flood plains. Tax map 4D hyphen 4, lot 043 hyphen 01, case number 2018 hyphen 09.
Seconded, seconded by Rod. Any other discussion before we place the vote? What?
With, with.
With condition?
With the condition of staff recommendations.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion items before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 4, 1, 0. Petition's approved.
Thank you very much.
Next up is planning board. Good luck, gentlemen. All right. So let's give everybody a moment to clear out and then we will proceed. Get some lights on. All right, so you know, I'm just going to move on. Discussion of possible action items?
Folks, can you, can you keep the conversation in the hall, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, we, we gotta finish our meeting. Okay. So, possible action items, discussion, anything concerned? Rod, anything we need to know?
Nope, I've got nothing.
Okay. Zoning minutes from 2000, or last, last month's zoning minutes, March 28th, March meetings. Do we have any motion on those?
I'll move we approve is printed.
All right, seconded by Kathleen. All right. Any other, anything else we want to discuss? Rob?
You're going to vote on that?
All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 5. 0, 1. 5, 0, 1. 4, 0, 1, sorry. Thank you for keeping me honest. Heat up, Saint.
Okay.
4, 0, 1. All right.
Neither, but I watched on TV so I could do it.
Lenny? Give me a motion to.
You had enough?
Merry Christmas.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, thank you very much.